Test, test.
First of all, before you die, it was very rare that any of us would send an email to just one person. You know, we're gonna send it to two or three, the mayor's gonna send it. So do you get something to send to yourself? You should, that should bring them to the back of your head.
If you feel comfortable for the two, and they work together.
Don't take so much to take them in.
That's usually key.
So they come up at four.
Yeah, if you have other questions, let me know.
I've been there before, calling this is my first time.
I don't want to tell her.
Well, we have 24 hours left.
So you'll probably die. She's like a shirt.
Uh huh, yep.
So you keep it light all these times in front of us. Yeah, that's what they try to steal that.
So, Mike, can you bring us?
I think I'm gonna have to say that, yeah.
He emails you, you answer.
But, he said, just give it to him. I don't, I don't think everyone's here.
He's in your ward. He's on 16th street.
He's right in the alley.
Yep. You take care, Al. I see where she's from.
I used to talk about once every two weeks. But he wanted me to tell him, he said, which one of their bad guys is that. He's, no, he's in therapy.
I got something, I got a plan with the AL, dude.
Hi, Alicia.
Hello, how are you?
I am.
You answered the zinger.
How are you?
You'll start learning new people on there.
Ready for another round of yogurts and peaches?
Or what?
What?
Yeah.
See, he knows you're sitting over there.
Well, I know I hear you talking, I just started going through the reading now.
I just got back from walking the dogs, not long ago, I haven't had a chance.
Hey Jim, I will send you those names again.
Okay. Thank you.
I won't be denied, but.
That's all right. I just gotta start getting that, yeah.
You might need to kiss somebody.
I have several, several ideas which are very unpopular.
That's all they cost me, and they're sketches.
Okay.
Where you got yours?
But I'll get them to you hopefully tomorrow.
The shoe place.
My cat.
Oh, they have on sale for 50% off. Let me see.
I did, because it tells right to your house.
If you don't have 25 feet of snow and it can't get to your door.
Do you have your dinner smell?
I, I got it done. I did not do it, but I got it done.
You didn't come and do mine?
For that work, I had to, my computer screwed up. And I had to go up to.
It was up to my pit.
And they had to go through.
No time to do anything else.
Plow was on, or I think they sent the bill. Do I pay that, do they pay that?
No, no, no.
Okay.
Sorry about last night.
That's all right.
I could kill my dogs.
Whole session is probably. It's to evaluate the professional competency of an individual.
No, I don't ask you.
It's being considered necessarily to convince individuals.
Yeah.
I don't use.
They're gonna discuss, you know, personal matters that aren't for the public.
Kinda good.
The employee can play west. Yeah, but that doesn't mean it's good or bad for the employee. You might even consider giving somebody a raise.
I might as well just hang out here and don't go.
Or terminate him.
We might be going back there anyway.
Yeah, you know?
I don't know.
I don't know, I think Joel apologized like three times. Hey, we had a night that started. Yeah, we had, like we were throwing rocks at each other.
Look, the way things are going, and the lack of control, and the way things are getting out of control. It's a matter of time, somebody's got murder, it's just that.
How are you? Name change.
How are you?
Oh, yeah, 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 same thing.
Considering we probably had 30,000 in the morning.
It could have been snowing.
I had walked my dogs in this mess, and a gal got her, and an alley got her car stuck.
Nope.
I mean, the conditions out there.
Yeah, but he's a day.
My name's okay, chat on the.
Okay, it's on.
Mine's mine now.
Your husband's.
I'm anxious, I hope, I hope it's winter.
How about worse?
God orders, drink more, find a.
Look after my own heart. Well, I appreciate the people that at least have partial. Some haven't been done at all.
The sidewalk.
Good evening, welcome to the City Hall Council Chambers at Den West State Street. Today's date is January 22, 2024 times 5:30 PM. We are here for a regularly scheduled city council meeting. We are called to order with those who are able to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call, please.
Hoop?
Here.
Cal?
Here.
Marty Hoff?
Here.
Mitchell?
You here?
Nichols?
Here.
Schneider?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Very good, time for public comment. And members of the public may make any comments on any item that was not on the agenda at this time. Approach the mics, state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes unless I authorize longer. Direct your comments to the mayor and council as a whole. And we up here shall not engage in discussion or debate on items raised by members of the public, and I actually may be taken on those items, otherwise we might not comply with the open meetings laws. It is time to recognize people, and I just, I did it again, I'm gonna do it every single time. I've only got one year and 11 months left, you think I'll.
Yeah, I'm right.
Yeah, actually, if you start early, Jim, then I'll remember better.
Normally, I start late, but.
Sure, blame it on Jim.
Yeah.
I think I.
This isn't coming off my time, is it?
I think, no, I still owe you 30 seconds, too.
Wait till we're done making comments. Okay, Jim Shaw, 522 North Second Street. Pat Turner said she shot and killed a stray pit bull that ran into her home and attacked her pet carrier dog, Chat. Along with multiple wounds, Chat also had to get re-vaccinated because officials told her the pit bull did not have rabies vaccination. She says, I am shocked that I went from picking weeds in my front garden to shooting a pit bull. If that dog had finished off Chat, it could have turned on me. Turner, a 73-year-old retired journalism professor, said the incident began that morning when she saw a large-grade pit bull trotting towards her in the front yard. Afraid she would be bitten, she said she headed into her house through the garage. A stray dog followed, so she hit it first with a broom handle, and when that didn't work, she picked up a small ax she uses for gardening. She began to hit it with the sharp edge of the ax, but it didn't even break the skin. When she opened the door to try to sneak into her house, the door, the pit bull got the door open and went inside. He grabbed Chat by the neck and ran into the living room with the dog in his jaws. She said there was blood spray in the living room and blood on the living room floor. She said the pit bull was in a frenzied killer mood. The stray dog then went into her bedroom and pinned the terrier to the floor. She says, I have a Colt .38 revolver in my nightstand, so I got it and shot the pit bull twice in the basis call. After the second bullet, his jaws relaxed and my dog fled. She said she was so shaken this that she's now seeing a psychologist for the first time in her life. She says, I never shot again in self-defense before. Forty-year-old Mia Darren and her mother were in an apartment complex in Louisiana. One afternoon, she put on music and danced with Mia and began folding clothes. Their family dog, Nico, a 60-pound pit bull, suddenly started barking. An unusual behavior for the normally mild-mannered two-year-old dog. When she investigated, Nico's expression was unlike anything she'd ever seen before. Despite his history as being a loyal and gentle companion, she instinctively felt in danger. She grabbed Mia and stepped into the safety of the bedroom, but Nico closed the distance between them with unexpected speed. Despite her efforts, Nico's imposing frame forced his way into the room and focused his attack on Mia. Megan McGinn, she escaped through the window with Mia, and she handed her severely injured daughter to paramedics, who rushed to the hospital with critical face and head injuries. She did not survive. Police arrived at the apartment, and Nico was shot three times from outside by the officers. Undeterred, he charged at the officers, and they had to shoot him 10 more times. Mia's stepfather said there were no prior signs of aggression from him. He recalls the dog's sudden change in demeanor as if he'd been possessed by a demon. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Doris Kinnick, 2020 Catalina Place. I am here because I want to tell you about Last Watch. We are having a presentation at the library this Saturday. Brenda Long will be the presenter from Garden Gate Ranch. She will speak about being trafficked and the restore of care for victims. And it'll be taking place on Saturday at 1:30. It is free at the Marshalltown Public Library, and that's Last Watch, and that's Labor and Sex Trafficking Watch Group. So if you would like to come, by all means, we'd love to see you. And of course, if you want to find out more, you can go to the Facebook page, Last Watch Marshalltown. Thank you.
Thanks, Doris. Anyone else?
Joe Carter, 610 Elmwood Drive. Nice to be with all of you tonight. To our city administrator, our entire city team, the city council, and the mayor, thank you for all the things that you do to make Marshalltown a better place and a better community. Last week, I saw Jeff Hubbard clearing snow from the ice skating rink. I know that this rink has caused Mr. Hubbard more work, but he has passionately embraced it for the benefit of bringing something new to the community, and so I thank you, Mr. Hubbard. I'll see, at the last meeting I attended, someone cited a statistic about how much citizens use sidewalks more than bike and walking trails. Now, I don't know the accuracy of that statistic, but as I thought about it more afterwards, two things came to mind. At the, first, it's obvious that more citizens use sidewalks. Sidewalks are just about everywhere, and even tonight, we all had to use one just to get into this building. I doubt most of us used a trail today. Second, I have never heard someone say, well, I want to move to that town, or I want to go to that town because they've got some great sidewalks. Of course, that would be ludicrous. However, I have heard people say, I want to live in that community, or I want to go to that community because it has great trails. So even if the statistic is true, I believe we need to continue to create more and more attractions like trails to attract more people to live here and to spend money here. I have a brief reading called "Tearing Down or Building Up." I watched them tearing down, I'm sorry, I watched them tearing a building down, a gang of men in Marshalltown. With a heave-ho and a loud yell, they swung a beam and the sidewall fell. I asked the foreman, are those men skilled? And the men you hired, the men you would hire if you had to build? He gave a laugh, said, no, indeed, just common labor is all I need. I can easily reckon a day or two what builders have taken years to do. I thought to myself, as I went away, which of these roles have I tried to play? Am I a builder who works with care, measuring life by the rule and square? Am I shaping my deeds to a well-made plan, patiently doing the best I can? Am I shaping my deeds to do a, I'm sorry, or am I a wrecker who walks the town content with the labor of tearing down? As the leader of a local manufacturer who is pushing to grow our worldwide business, I say that we need more attractions and more building in this community. If we're going to be able to attract more employees to join us and live here, to help us grow from being an impoverished community to one of great wealth again, that is got to happen. I thank all of you for pushing. I thank all of you for pushing and for building and to make Marshalltown great. Thank you for your time." Oh, and I also forgot to mention, because Jeff's using the polar pusher, Mr. Gah, I'm leaving this behind so that as a tribute to what the city's doing, maybe you guys can use this if we get a little more snow.
Sure. Thank you, Joe. Anyone else in the public? Now, we are at the Years of Service Awards, so we'd like to thank Christian Case for five years with our fire department, and Jeff Hubbard has made the five-year mark here. Yeah, I gotta tell you, Jeff, you've done a great job. It's been phenomenal, truly, and the latest thing really is that ice skating rink in the right place, and the city staff really did. It wasn't level enough, there were other reasons not to be there, but it's in the right place, it's where everybody can see it, and it's just a tribute to the Marshalltown Company for getting Iowa Wild up here and being a sponsor, and all the people that donated. I mean, there are bleachers out there, there are lights from Eliot. This was a community project, and it wouldn't have happened without Jeff Hubbard and our city administrator and our council working on getting that done, and I'm really proud of that, so. So much for the, and I guess I've already done my mayor comments. Anybody up here at the council like to speak before we get going on the consent agenda?
Your Honor, may I?
You may.
I was pleased to see today an update from city administrator Gah that the county turned in their evaluations. As Councilor Thompson said last week, "We'll do whatever it takes to get it done," but I would like to recognize the city staff that have 22 less days to get that accomplished by state law. We were the third-to-last county to get those submitted, so a lot of heavy lifting is on the horizon, and I just want to say thank you in advance.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes. I'd like to give praise and thank you to Rick Legg and all the whole crew in the city that try to keep our streets clean, because it's been a big mess, and they've done an excellent job.
Anyone else, Joe? Okay, very good. Anybody want to move to approve the consent agenda?
I'd move to approve, Your Honor.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, by roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Very good. Carrie, it read away.
Approve the minutes for the January 8, 2024, meeting and the January 15, 2024, meeting in the bill listed amount of $1,268,824.06. Approve alcohol license renewal for Ocean City Chinese Restaurant at 5 West Main Street. Approve November 2023 financial statements. Resolution 2024-007, adopting supplement S8 to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Marshalltown, Iowa through ordinance 15078. Resolution 2024-008, setting a public hearing on an amendment to the 28-year agreement between the City of Marshalltown and the Marshall County Communications Commission for the use of space at 909 South Second Street. Resolution 2024-009, approving contract change order number 16 for the airport terminal hangar and site improvement project number ARP 19001, a decrease of $6,147. And resolution 2024-010, approving engineer statement of completion and accepting Garland Construction, Inc. for the airport hangar terminal and site improvement project number ARP 19001.
Very good, thank you. On to item G, just one motion tonight. What is that, please?
Motion to approve a garbage and refuse recyclable and yard waste holler license for Prairie Waste Solutions LLC.
Move for approval.
Thank you. Very second?
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Your Honor, we have a company here, Stone San, it was previously Stone Sanitation. They've been bought by Prairie Waste Solutions, so they've applied for a new waste holler license, and we have Kevin here to give a little summary about the company.
Hi, Kevin Volkma, manager, Prairie Waste Solutions. Here tonight just to let you know that we were bought out by Prairie Waste Solutions. We were formerly Stone Sanitation. Very optimistic about what the future holds for us. This new group has come in. They're letting us run it more as a local group. They're standing behind our people locally. They're providing new equipment, new trashcans, the toters, the 65-gallon, 96-gallon toters are on their way. We've ordered several new dumpsters. We're in the process of looking at two new trucks. A lot of really good, positive changes moving forward. Very excited about what's to come.
Very good, thank you.
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
And the biggest news for Marshalltown is the possible move?
The possible move, we are looking very actively at moving into the community. We're, we love being part of the community, we love doing the parades and everything else that we do for the community. We try to sponsor as many events and groups as what we can, whether it be school activity groups or other things. We're very active in this community, we love being part of this community, we look forward to growing with this community.
Very good, thank you. Thanks for asking the question.
Thank you very much.
I'm sure you weren't the only one wondering that, so, thanks. Anybody else up here? Any public comment on this one? Let's call the roll.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Here.
Very good, that carried. On to resolutions, so what's our first one?
Resolution 2024-011, authorizing the fire department to enter into an agreement to purchase a 2023 light rescue vehicle through Reliant Fire Apparatus with fiscal year 26 CIP funds.
Call for a motion first.
Move for approval.
Thank you, any second?
Second.
Discussion.
Dave Reardon, Marshalltown Fire Department. So in your packet tonight, you had a memo and the resolution to go ahead and enter into a contract with Reliant Fire Apparatus to purchase and replace, to enter into a contract to replace our light rescue vehicle. You purchased the chassis, which we were lucky enough to find. We won't pay for the vehicle. If we entered into the agreement, we won't pay anything, and the price will be honored when we inspect and take delivery of the vehicle, which will be in 2026. I did, as I was sitting over, I noticed there's a typo in there. The price of the vehicle is $235,500, and I had $233 listed up above it, and I would recommend that we approve this and enter into a contract to purchase, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions up here or comments?
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
So Dave, that $2,000 typo will come out of your retirement fund, is that correct?
Yeah. Yeah, no.
Any legitimate questions? Comments, public? Roll call.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Always trying to save us money, but, oh, come on. Very good. Next item, please.
Resolution 2024-012, amending the City of Marshalltown Council manual.
Move to approve, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion on this one.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is something we had as a discussion item at the previous council meeting. Everything's brought back the same, just a couple of minor changes, I think, in where words are in a sentence on page 18 after the attorney reviewed it, but we're ready to go if the council's ready to approve.
Any discussion up here? Any public discussion on this one? Roll call again.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
That carried as well, before going on to the next one. Hey, Kevin, I often will tell people, if they've only come here to do one thing, don't be embarrassed to get up and walk out, because nobody up here cares, and we know that that's okay. If you really want to stick around all night, you can, okay? I'm not trying to kick you out, but I don't want you to sit around needlessly. Okay, next item for us.
Resolution 2024-013, approving a professional services agreement for $50,000 with Schneider and Associates for design services for the trailhead and bridge project.
Move for approval. Second.
Discussion on this one. Joe?
Jeff Hubbard, Park and Rec Director. So this is part of the Destination Iowa grant. We've got the Water Plaza underway with design work going. Now we need to figure out what the trailhead and bridge is going to look like, so we had three applica, or three firms turning in applications or proposals, I guess, for the project. Us and the city staff and the steering committee interviewed all three firms and decided that Snyder and Associates had the best proposal for us. They're the ones who did the High Trussell Bridge, as well as the new bridge on the High Trussell over Oral Labor Road, and some cool bridge projects, and thought they could bring something unique to our project here in the Lynn Creek District. So I'd recommend you to approve the contract for them to design and come up with cost estimates for the project.
Thank you. Anything from the council?
Question maybe of John Hall. So how's the fundraising going for the whole grant?
Thanks for the question, John Hall, Marshalltown Area Chamber of Commerce. So where we are at in the fundraising process is still putting together all the final collab, final documents and everything to go out and really hit it hard, as well as putting together a committee to ultimately lead the charge on this. What I can say pretty confidently is that the handful of meetings that we've had, we've received probably more positive feedback than we even expected, both in terms of excitement for getting the project done, as well as expectations of what we should be asking for from those entities for funds. So I can't sit here and say we've got hard commitments on a good chunk of it, but I'd say, soft commitment-wise, we feel like we are making very strong momentum to have funds secured by the time that it comes to actually doing the bids on these projects, which I think is ultimately what you all will need to see in order to have confidence to move forward, so.
What kind of timeframe are you seeing for, I mean, in my head, we need to have it by like the end of this year for commitments, for getting it done by the end of 2025?
Yeah, I think our, what we've communicated with the city administrator is our goal is to have at least 80% commitments by July-August timeframe to give you all confidence. I think we'd, you know, depending on engineering timelines, we'd like to give you guys the level of confidence to say yes to going to bid on these sooner rather than later.
Feeling better?
I am, I had, it was a light cold last week. I worked the two days I was home, I just, yeah, it's all good. Thank you.
And I will just add that these two projects for the Destination Iowa grant were estimated at $1.1 million for the bridge, $1.2 for the trailhead, and we have pretty much that funding between the Geo Bonds Trails, Inc. and the Destination Iowa grants. I think for these two projects, we're like within $50,000, so it's the Water Plaza that we need to do the real fundraising for.
I clearly see that.
Okay.
It's less than 40 grand for each of the trail things.
Yeah, I just want to clarify that for the, this two parts of the project, we're looking real good.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments by the counselors?
I'm trying to get through with all my heavy boots here, sorry.
Okay, public comment?
Lee Bottor, 401 Orchard Drive. Thank you for the update on the fundraising. Just a couple questions, I guess. Skateboard park, I know I went through the stuff in detail. Part of the skateboard park, it sounds like it's going to be taken away. When I personally drive by there, and I drive by there at least twice a day, if not four times a day during warm weather, I see a lot of kids playing out there on the skateboard park. The piece that's going to be removed, do we have any clue where that's going to be relocated? Secondly, the bridge that's there, has there been a structural engineer report done to say that that bridge should be removed versus revamped? And the, let's see, the third issue, when I went through the proposals, there's a piece in there that talks about Story County, not Marshall County, and I think that's just a piece that needs to be looked at. I tend to, in my business, I have to look at all the, dot the i's, cross the t's, make sure everything's in compliance, but there's one of the documents in there for city administrator or Jeff or somebody that it was showing Story County versus Marshall County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. One of my concerns about going forward with this project is that there are four or five private property owners that can affect the completion of this trail or whether it can be completed. One of them is Wayward Social. In 2018, they thought it was a good idea, but do we have a contract with them to use their land to put the trail across there to get from at least Lynn Creek to stea, whatever, Rock? I can't, Freedom Rock, there you go, thank you. Steamboat Rock. Freedom Rock, so...
That's the other end.
So, yeah, that's the other end. So it, we don't have, we're basically putting the city at jeopardy and negotiating for that section of trail. Thanks.
Anybody else on this one?
Joe Carter, 610 Elmwood Drive. I don't have another polar pusher to give away, so I'm sorry about that, but with regard to this issue, yes, there is an issue, I think it's already been taken care of with Jeff Hubbard and Wayward Social. Those of us who are part of that project, Crosby Park, from the Freedom Rock through Crosby Park, that trail has already been taken care of by those owners. Wayward Social has already done their job, and the city took care of the part through, part through Creekside Estates, and then we just have the portion that then would run on the easement with the city and the golf course, so, and then we're on to the skate park. The other questions, I don't know, but this is a great project, got to make certain this thing goes, and Debbie Durham is not going to be happy if we can't get this all done by the time she shows up on February 15.
Your Honor, can I address a few of these concerns? This, where the eventual skate park piece will end up is indeterminate, because we need to allow the design process to happen for the trailhead first. So the intention is for all the pieces to remain, they may not be in the exact same spot they are today, but probably in the same area. And then Snyder, I was part of the selection committee, they are nationally renowned as bridge experts. This is what they do, is either rails to trails or old bridges to trails, so we do have, in selecting them, they are the true experts, and part of it was they, they were going to investigate what could be saved about the current structure to minimize cost.
Can you look at the contract to make sure it says Marshall County and not Story County?
Yeah, we can look into that.
Excellent. Story County would pay for some of it, that'd be fine. Anybody else?
Sorry, one more time. John Hall, Marshalltown Area Chamber of Commerce. So in addition to the fundraising components, I just wanted to talk about kind of the excitement around these projects. Certainly, getting them across the line is going to be important, as we do have an active developer who has a portion of the Creekside Estates under contract and is looking at breaking ground next year and, or this year, excuse me, and making some significant investment into there, knowing that residents are going to be looking at trail access. And then from just a visitor perspective and the like, you know, the opportunity to hop on a trail and ride until you can get a drink is a pretty popular thing. Personally, I am looking forward to a trailhead where I can then bike down to Wayward Social, which is about the distance I can bike, before then biking onto the Legion, which is, feels like a good next appropriate distance, and then starting the long trek back to the trailhead with another stop at Wayward on the way feels like a perfect afternoon for me and my biking abilities. So looking forward to seeing these projects done. Thank you.
The person that cut my hair was telling me about e-bikes, and you know, those can get you there faster, too. And I think they sell them here at Black Tire.
Anybody else? I'm for welcome.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
No.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Hoop?
No.
I didn't hear the one answer. I have my hearing, I have my ears. Was he yes? Okay, that carried, thank you. Hearing aid's likely to be installed in the next week or two. Next matter here.
Resolution 2024-014, approving the amendment of the comprehensive plan of 2030, changing parcel 831811426012. parcel 831811426012, which is 201 East Merle Hibbs Boulevard to General Commercial.
Move for adoption.
Thank you. Any second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion on this one.
Hello, City Council, Hector Hernandez was the city planner. I just had to make this amendment that was approved, I think it was July of 2023, and we didn't have any city or planning and zoning commission meetings until last Thursday. So I just came with this recommendation to amend the comprehensive plan of 2030 for 201 East West, East Merle Hibbs Boulevard to General Commercial. So on the comprehensive plan, it currently has, it showed as low-density residential. We didn't really have a, pretty much an idea on what that was, but with the new zoning ordinance that was approved in 2022 of April, it shows that we were kind of looking for more of a mixed use, which we zoned it as, but with our building standards that did not meet the VA clinic, we had to rezone it to a general commercial. So that's why we're presenting that comprehensive amendment, so we're recommending to amend that and make those changes to the comprehensive plan. Any questions?
Anything up here? Anything out in the public? Roll call.
Hoop?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
That carried as well, next one.
Resolution 2024-015, approving the final plaque of Edgewood Industrial Park Edition and accepting the dedication of the public lands and public improvements identified therein.
Move for adoption.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion.
Hector Hernandez, city planner, again, and I just have the comprehen-- or I have the final plaque for Edgewood Industrial Park Edition. I was moved to approve on January 17th, all approved, so it's just every subdivision's required, once it's more than three parcels, which this case is, it has been approved already with the pre-eliminary plaque, and all these plaques meet the requirements for general industrial. Any questions?
Anything up here?
Hector, this is, this is just so that we can now begin actually selling the lots, correct?
Yes, we need the, we need the final plaques and the pre-eliminary, so we can go ahead and send it to the county to get it recorded, that way we can go ahead and proceed with the sale of the properties, or the lots.
Thank you.
You know, I haven't been out there to see the traffic going in and out, anybody notice that yet?
It's pretty nice out there.
We haven't had an accident at the old intersection that was the worst accident in town. Son, son, okay.
Your Honor, I'd just like to say, this is a momentous day for economic development in Marshalltown. I think in five years, we'll look back, this place will be full, and we've been working on the next one hopefully, so this is exciting.
Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I've had 100% positive feedback on the, what I'd say the ham haulers, you know, using the new road. Everybody's happy down there, I haven't heard one negative comment about the corner, the new corner, the new route, everything, so.
You can actually turn a semi without going into the Southbound lanes now, great, truly. Anybody else up here? Any public comment on this one? Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
And our next one. Resolution 2024-016, setting a public hearing for the proposed sale and conveyance of title of Lot 6 of the Edgewood Industrial Park Edition from the city of Marshalltown, Iowa to Boost Run LLC.
Move for approval. Second.
Discussion.
So, kind of with the Councilman Snyder's comments about this is a good day, this is a good day, because we've been working on the final plat, and while that's being recorded and the final things, we have an entity wanting to locate out there, wanting to purchase a lot, Lot 6 as a matter of fact, so we thought this might be one of the harder lots to sell, and it's one of the first ones to go, so that's good news, and with your motion, we would have a public hearing, and you'll be able to consider the offer at the next meeting.
Thank you. Any discussion up here? Public discussion. Roll call.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
That carried, looks like we have a public hearing coming, what's this one about? Public hearing and resolution 2024-017, providing for the conveyance and transfer of title for 112 North Second Avenue from the city of Marshalltown, Iowa to Fars Foundation.
Public hearing is open at 6:04 PM, did you get any written comments to the clerk's office?
No, Your Honor.
Time for public comments on this one? And if there are none, then we go on to staff review.
Yes, this lot is one of six that we're going to discuss here, this one will sell for $800.
And any council comments on this one? I declare the public hearing is closed at 6:04, I think that set a record on the fastest public hearing we've ever had. Are we calling for approval, a vote to approve it now, too?
I move to approve, Your Honor.
Second, Your Honor.
And roll call.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
That carried as well, second to last public hearing. Public hearing and resolution 2024-012, providing for the conveyance and transfer of title for 110 South Second Avenue from the city of Marshalltown, Iowa to Esteban C. Ochoa.
Public hearing is open at 6:09 PM, clerk didn't receive any written comments, any public comments? Any staff review?
This one will sell for $3,000.
Council comments? Declare the public hearing closes at 6:09 PM, is there a motion?
Move to approve, Your Honor.
Thank you, second?
Second.
And roll call.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Last public hearing. Public hearing and resolution 2024-022, providing for the conveyance and transfer of title for 918 North Fifth Avenue from the city of Marshalltown, Iowa to Joel F. Duden.
For the record, I forgot to say, the last one was, it did carry, that motion did, and for this one, the public hearing is open at 6:10 PM, clerk didn't receive any written comments, I'm sure there aren't any public comments, and the staff review could be really short.
We're back to the new average of $2,500.
Any council comments, other than making a motion? Make a motion.
Is there a move?
I'll take the other one as a second, and roll call.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear who the second was.
I'll second.
Okay. Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
That carried, looks like we have a public hearing coming, what's this one about?
Public hearing and resolution 2024-012, providing for the conveyance and transfer of title for 112 North Second Avenue from the city of Marshalltown, Iowa to Fars Foundation.
Public hearing is open at 6:04 PM, clerk received no written comments, are there any public comments? Any staff want to respond?
This one will be the top of this, this one will fall a little bit, but not too bad, this is a whopping $5,000.
Thank you, and any council comments? Public hearing is closed at 6:08 PM, anybody want to move?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
That carried as well, on to the decision item, the first one, which is a special
meeting for January 29, 2024. Mr. Guy, want to tell us about that one?
Yes, as we mentioned last Thursday, we couldn't prepare anything for the budget, we were waiting on the valuations, those came in today. You'll notice Diana's not with us, she's downstairs working on calculations right now, she's been working on them all day, we went through a few things, so we would be prepared next Monday, as we talked about, for a special meeting to go through several things, if that works for the council.
Time of day and place?
We just do it normal, 5:30 if that works.
And here?